States of America, and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the April 1st Fool's Day meeting of the County Commission. I remind you to silence your cellphones, and that the meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly, and you can contact Ken if you need a listening device, he's just walking, a device, he's just walking out the door, but if you need something for, to hear better, he can help you out. And Cindy, we'll move on.
Routine business, item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, are there any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the County Commission minutes of March 25th, 2014.
Move the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, is there any additions or corrections? See, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $583,606.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a comment for permission to birth.
Today's bills include $13,476 in rent, and another $8,200 for five funerals.
Definitely play a lot in our, out of our human services department. I have a motion and a second to pay the bills, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move to approve routine action?
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the routine action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is consider a motion to approve special personnel action to convert one civil process server, grade 12-1, to a certified civil process server, grade 13-1. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever, Human Resources. The request has a briefing memo attached for your, for you, and Michelle Boyd is here to answer any questions, but essentially this boils down to being able to use this position for broader base responsibilities like protection orders and lockouts for just an additional $1,800 a year.
Are there any questions for Carrie or Michelle regarding this position? This is a budgeted item that is vacant at this position, at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the special personnel action to convert one civil process service, service, sir, to a certified civil process server. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Michelle.
Item C is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for April 2014.
Hi, I have several for you this morning. Jason Burns, Christopher Janos, and Zach Zagelski, deputy sheriffs with the sheriff's office, all celebrating five years of service. Ralph Hammer with the highway, celebrating 10. Don Lotwine with IT, and Josh Analt with IT, both celebrating 10. Christine Slate, Eric Smith, and Jeremy Shavey, all at the jail, celebrating 10 years of service. We also have Vicki Hicks, who's our lieutenant at the jail, who's celebrating 20. And Ken McFarland, who I think you all know, at the commission office, celebrating 35. And I'm looking around, I'm not sure if I'm missing anyone, but the only one I see here is Ken. So our congratulations to all of us folks.
So recognize Ken, who works for us, thank you very much.
Yay, Ken!
Yay, Ken! We couldn't do it without him, so, thank you very much.
The wizard in the closet.
Item D is to recognize volunteers in county government for March 2014.
Here again, each month I stand before you, just to talk about how many volunteers we have working for us, all over county. Another banner month, over 240 volunteers, so our things go out to them as well.
All right, can we move on with the next part?
Item E is to consider a motion to issue a proclamation recognizing April 6th through the 12th as Volunteer Week in Minnehaha County.
During the last couple of years, this has been something new that we're bringing forward to, to ask you to designate that week as the official recognition of our volunteers at county. I just read off 240 during the course of the year we have, I mean, that's an average for us. You've had months where you've had over 300 volunteers, so they really do, do a lot for the county. I know in the past, you've gone around and read the proclamation, but it's entirely up to you how you want to go forward to prove that.
If I could maybe, Carrie, have you read it?
Oh, lovely.
All right.
All right. Whereas National Volunteer Week is April 6th through the 12th of 2014, and whereas National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities, and whereas each month, an average of approximately 235 volunteers contribute to several areas throughout county, giving thousands of hours of service, enriching the lives of those they have helped, and saving the taxpayers of Minnehaha County tens of thousands of dollars. And whereas the Minnehaha County Commission wishes to thank all of the individuals who have given their time to support county government, and make our community a better place to live, now therefore, the Minnehaha County Board of Permissioners do hereby proclaim April 6th through 12th of 2014 as Minnehaha County Volunteer Week.
And I didn't say anything with our list of volunteers, but they truly do save us tens of thousands of dollars, and when I think about volunteer work, before I came to county, I didn't think about the county as a place that you would volunteer, because it's government. And it is nice that people do think of us and put us as their priority, so. Any other comments? Look for a motion.
Make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to recognize the proclamation of April 6th through 12th as a Volunteer Week in Minnehaha County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrie.
Item six is application for abatement, the first two are from Pam Nelson.
Morning.
Good morning, Pam.
I have two applications for abatements for the purposes of the elderly assessment freeze, I have record ID 22170 for $870.30, and record ID 65321 for 2,000, or 295.51, sorry.
Any questions for Pam on the two elderly freezes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the two elderly, elderly freezes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
And we have one more application from Kyle Hilsop.
Good morning, Commissioners, we bring before you this morning one application for abatement on record ID 68200 from an April Gillette for 2013 property taxes in the amount of $216.79, and we are recommending denial.
Record ID number 68200, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do we have any questions for Kyle?
The, the reason of recommendation was because there was no application on file.
There was no application, it was a contract for title, that title was never filed, nor was there ever an application made.
If there's, Kyle, if there's still an application made, is there a time, is there opportunity still to abate these taxes?
Problem here is she sold the trailer already, so, we granted the owner occupied status for taxes payable in 2015.
Right.
But this covered the tax, taxes payable this year.
Did she live in it?
Yes. She had a contract on the property, but never brought forward the contract or the application for owner occupied status, so. That crystal ball that the state gave us just wore out about eight years ago.
I have a motion and a second, any other questions or comments for Kyle? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously to deny the property tax abatement for $216.79.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
There are no notices and requests today, and there are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien, John Pecus.
Thank you, Cindy, this is on DPNO 45749, in the amount of $1,579.71, and another DPNO 66603, in the amount of $995. The applicant is currently requesting a compromise in full of the two liens, their total actually, I believe, is $2,574.71. She is offering $1,200, which is approximately 47 percent of the balance. The DPNO in the amount of $995 is just in the applicant's name, the other lien in the amount of $1,579 is in the name of both the applicant and her ex-husband. They, of course, were married and now they are divorced. Currently, the applicant is wanting to close on a new home, which would be April 18th of 2014, and of course, when we were preparing the title work, the lien for the county aid lien actually came up, and so naturally, the title company informed the person requesting the release of the lien, that they owed money to Minnehaha County. The liens were incurred between 2001 and 2009, primarily for utility payments and for poor relief services. Now, interestingly enough, the applicant has actually gone on and obtained her college degree, and she has become financially stable, and I think that is, I think, one of the items that tips the scale here. She has two minor children, and she works full-time, and according to her last year tax return, she owed over $39,000 and got a refund of $3,031. She lists assets in the amount of approximately $35,000, $19,000 of that unfortunately is child support payments, which is owed to her by her ex-husband. Now, obviously, those would have to be unfortunately unpaid for quite some time, to have it actually come up to that, that level. When she was in the office completing her application, the applicant indicated she does not ever expect to collect that money. The remaining assets include, of course, her household goods, 2008 Nissan, a small amount on her checking account, she has liabilities of $50,400, consisting of $40,000 fed loan, and a $10,000 loan from a local credit union. Once again, she did include all of her, her tax returns for us to review, and, you know, I know that it's not 50 percent, it's 47 percent, however, looking at the history here, 2001 through 2009, she goes to requesting help with utility payments and poor relief services, to now she's actually achieved a college degree, and she's financially stable, and she looks towards, hopefully, purchasing a home and becoming a property taxpayer. I'm going to make that motion for $1,200.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Commissioner Kelly.
Is it possible that we could leave the, second, was the second one the one that she and her husband had?
Yes.
Is it possible to leave the balance on the husband and release the property from the, from the lien?
Absolutely, and I thought that was my motion.
I thought that was my second.
Yeah.
I do have a comment.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm not clear on that motion then, because we just, we just released her then?
Yeah, we released, we were accepting a $1,200 payment.
Yeah.
For releasing her from the $995 lien, which is hers, and then the other portion of it would then be applied to the $1,579.71, $71 cents, and then everything left would then be held against her husband, all right?
But it'd be released from the home?
Right, yes.
Okay.
And I just want to make that clear, the motion needs to also release it against the real estate, since this is a real estate transaction going forward.
That would be, oh. Yeah, and that was what I-
I don't have that information though, Ken.
We'll get it.
That's, okay.
It'll have to be done, if that's what you want to do.
That's what we want to do.
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be my comment, is that we don't have any information that this, any documentation that this house is being purchased, so that will have to be done before this goes through.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Okay, okay.
I just, go ahead.
I also want to clarify, how much of the payment apply it all to her personal lien and the balance to the one she has jointly with her ex?
Correct.
With, all of that goes to her ex?
Yep, the rest, yeah, right. The rest of it goes to her ex.
Madam Chair, I just want to comment that on her list of assets, she points out that she's owed child support in the amount of $19,050, of $19,050, and it's really sad to me that so many people are trying to raise their children, which are so important to our community, while being starved of the resources necessary, making them even more dependent on the county for, and the school district for everything that they get.
Well, and if I may, just to echo what Jeff is indicating, amazingly, she goes on and earns a college degree and claws her way over that hurdle, which she has in front of her, of being deficient on not having that child support paid. She goes ahead and she's moving forward with her life. I mean, I, that's, that's yeoman's effort, I'll tell you that.
I have a motion and a second, I want to make sure we have the motion correct before we move on. Cindy, are you clear on where we want to be? You want to read it back?
Well, yeah, I'm trying to write it down. So of the $1,200 payment, $995 will be applied to DPNO 66603, the balance of $205 will be applied to DPNO 45749, with the balance of that lien owing remaining in the name of her ex-husband only, and also the lien will be released from any, any title work for the property she is purchasing.
Right.
Okay, that's the motion. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity for the public to come forward and speak about anything that is not on the agenda. Does anybody want to speak? Mrs. Dunham, if you would just identify yourself and your address.
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the County Commission, my name is Rebecca Dunn, D-U-N-N. My address?
Mm-hmm.
320 North Summit Avenue here in Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
I am here because on March 27th, I had a call from a couple of my neighbors, longtime friends, in fact, 50-year-long friends, saying that they had not received, they'd received a ballot, but my name was not on the ballot. Gail is hearing impaired, and so she was using her special phone, her husband has respiratory challenges, so he was not able to call me. I immediately said, "I'll be right over," and I went over to their home, they showed me the ballots, and at this time, Madam Chair, I have brought some copies of the ballot, if you'd like to see them.
Yep, you can pass them on.
Okay.
Or Ken, you want to just pass them on for her, please?
I have three, and then this is the way the ballot should look. My name probably should appear right under Denny Pearson's name, if you look at the sample ballot. Yes, I'm in the Central District. Of course, I was stunned, as the Rogers were stunned, because my name was not on the ballot, so I immediately went down to the auditor's office and talked with Bob Litz, and took the invalid ballot to him and gave it to him.
Let's just see it.
I have, I've won four terms in the State Senate, and I know that there can be an error in balloting. However, I think this is very serious, it could be appearing on other ballots. I can see in this race that there may be a situation where people may receive an invalid ballot, not be aware that there is an invalid ballot.
Can you pass the sample ballot?
Sorry. I'm hogging it.
If two ballots go to the same household, and they're close, close family friends who live in my own neighborhood, the likelihood that these are the only two bad ballots is extremely remote. I think someone needs to dig deep and find out who's got the ballots out there, and if they are also left off the names in the city election. I feel you as this County Commission perhaps should be certainly aware of this, to investigate possibility of other invalid ballots. I certainly believe in the transparency of government, I believe in the sacredness of the ballot, and I think this is something certainly that the candidates should not have to worry about. My opponent's name was not on the ballot as well. None of us should have to be worrying about this, we just assume that the ballots are correct when they go out. I think this is more serious than needing to return address to Macy's, this is, this is more serious when you find out that you have to return a ballot that's invalid. I request your investigation into these invalid ballots and the possibility that there may be more.
Is there any comments? Otherwise, I-
I have a question. Ms. Dunn, so who do you think should investigate? Should the, should it be the Secretary of State, should it be, you know, an open citizen group, or who's qualified to make this kind of investigation?
Well, we're one week out from, we're one week out from the election, and you are the umbrella over Bob Litz, is that correct?
He's, he's, he's an entity of his own, being elected separately from us.
Well, perhaps I'm asking for your suggestions is who should know about this, and who should be investigating it?
Well-
Go ahead.
We do sit as the canvassing board after the election, and so, do we actually, and I guess that's the question to Ken McFarland, do we canvass the city election? I believe we do.
No, the city does.
The city, the canvassing board?
Yeah.
So, I do believe that if there are questions related to the election process, that that canvassing board over at City Hall would have to answer for the questions regarding the ballot, and how it was, there were questions when it was sent out. Clearly, if we sat as a canvassing board, we would have to certify the election results, and if there are questions related to the validity of the election process, that's when we would actually bring it up at the, at the time of the canvas, but these are good questions that I think need to be answered.
But you do, when do you do the canvassing?
Week after.
The city does it.
The city would do it afterwards. We'll do one after the primary, I believe, in June, and we'll canvas that, but the city elections, and I believe the school board as well, isn't it also a school board election? But the city does it for both?
I think they have a member present on that canvassing board.
Okay, all right, so, they'll have somebody present to review that, that election, so.
So it's after the election, it's after the election that, that you would go in?
Yes, if there are questions related to it.
Commissioner Kelly.
Do we assume then that all the ballots went out without any names on them?
No, not at all.
You found ballots that did have the name on them?
I have not seen any, I only know of the two ballots that for sure were wrong and were invalid, the two friends of mine.
I-
I haven't seen any of the other ballots.
I mean, I don't know how part would be, is the auditor here?
Yeah, I was just going to give Bob an opportunity, if he wants to say anything today or doesn't-
All right, I'll hold my questions until then.
Bob, did you want to say anything today, or did you just? Okay.
I was only aware of the two invalid ballots, but that there could be a possibility of other invalid ballots.
And I think the Secretary of State is probably Bob's next person up the line, and not us, but-
Okay, okay.
But I think Bob said he'd say something when you're, when you've completed.
Okay. The only ballot that I did have was the one that Gail gave to me that was invalid, that my name was not on it, and I took that down and did turn it in to Bob Litz.
Okay.
And he also said he'd take care of it.
Ms. Dunn, in the Argus, there was a mention that you were in violation of the law, have, has there been any additional contact from anyone about law violations on your behalf?
No, not at all, I don't think there's any, there, it was an invalid ballot, my name was not on the ballot.
And it was not a marked ballot?
It was not a marked ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Litz, did you, or, did you have any comments? Public comments?
Morning, Commissioner, Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and Ms. Dunn is absolutely correct that she did indeed discover two ballots that were mailed out incorrectly, that we had the wrong ballot in there. And after that was discovered, we went through our system again, and we did locate one more, and we went and took care of that, I took care of that by seven o'clock the next morning. I went up to the, the people who originally got the wrong ballot, and I had to retrieve the one ballot, however, the day that the incident occurred, I believe the proper sequence of events was Ms. Dunn took the ballot from the voters' house, went to the city, and spoke to them, and they sent her down to the auditor's office, and she came back, and we had a discussion about it. At that point, she was informed that candidates are not supposed to touch ballots, and, and then she left the office after a brief interval, and the ballot came back about 27 hours later. This did stick in my craw, I thought that was probably a wrong thing to do, I think it showed her intent at that time here. You know, the auditor's office regrets that any of these ballots went out, and I would describe it best as a computer-generated clerical error. And like I said, Heather and I did go back through our streetmaster, checked her, her, her central district really well, and then we went around the city one more time. This has been an ongoing project from our streetmaster for about a year and a half now, it was not just the city of Sioux Falls, we went through all of the, all the small municipalities in Minnehaha County. I decided after this weekend, and after some other soul-searching and listening to some advice of others, that it would do no good to pursue this matter for a minor ASRD infraction of ballot handling, and I was going to let the matter just, just lie, and that's what I prefer to do at this point. And I'd also tell you that we are still diligent and looking for any ballots, the ballots are not official until they come back down here and get stamped, so if somebody out there thinks they've got the wrong ballot, it was mentioned in the paper as well as the TV article, that we would be glad to investigate that matter and make it right with them.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Kelly?
I don't understand how this happened. I mean, I, you're waiting for people to come in, and yet, people may not know, they may have an issue in the Walmart or some other issue, and not even pay attention to the, to the lack of candidates for the central district, and if that's a close race, it's a very critical issue, but I, I don't understand how it happened.
Well, like I said, Commissioner, I believe it was a computer-generated clerical error, we get these labels-
What's that mean? What's that mean?
When we, when we type in a voter's name, we get a label that comes up that draws on our data bank, and when we put that label on it, it tells us which ballot to put in there, and their name and address and some other information, we put it on the envelope and send it out to them.
Where was it, where's the database generated? Was it generated here, or was it generated with state?
Well, it is kept in Total Vote, which is a statewide voting system, which I think quite highly, it's got a lot of, a lot of great things about it, but, you know, it also, you know, like any new system, has some very minor glitches in it, and we're working constantly to take them out of there.
Any other questions for-
Madam Chair.
I guess, Bob, I regret very much that you would in any way point your finger at Rebecca, saying that she had done something wrong. It's clear that out of the goodness of our heart and absolutely good faith, she brought this thing forward, you know, how do you know you did things, that there are only three ballots incorrect? How many other incorrect ballots have already been cast? You know, Commissioner Pecus, you're often quote Latin, and I'm going to try, I don't know, te custodis ipso custodias, who guards the guardians? Who is watching you, Bob? Who is watching to make sure you're doing this thing right? And if there's no investigation, what the heck? Every, anything could be going on, we have to take your word for it?
You can investigate all you want, Commissioner.
Okay, who should investigate? Should you investigate yourself?
Well, no, I think that's inappropriate.
I think Governor Christie's staff just investigated his situation and found he'd done nothing wrong. Anyway, Bob, I think someone should investigate, and whether it's now or after this election, I think we should find out what happened, but I really regret the idea that you would point your finger at Rebecca Dunn, and say that she was the one that was in error, she was the one that had broken the law. Anyway, thanks.
Any other questions or comments for Bob?
Well, I'm just going to go back to a conversation that we had several months ago, when we went to these Uber voting centers, and the linchpin to this whole thing is to make sure that the correct people get the correct ballots. And you can go into any voting center and, and vote at the same location, the concerning thing is that there was an admission, at least by somebody involved with the election process, through Total Vote, the, the database, that there are glitches in the system, and that is a red flag, because I certainly don't want to get confused on the butterfly ballot and vote for Buchanan again.
Right.
But that is a legitimate concern, so obviously, this needs to get rolled up to a higher level, because if there's any question regarding the database related to Total Vote, we need it fixed sooner rather than later. And so, I, I think we have to make a call to the Secretary of State's office, and make sure that that database is in fact is valid as it possibly can be, so. I, I certainly don't, at this point, I'm not willing to cast any dispersions towards at least our auditor, who has tried to correct that, and he did his yeoman's effort to try to find a missing ballot, but I also want to thank Rebecca Dunn for at least trying to help some people that obviously had some physical challenges to go ahead and trying to, to get their vote cast, and so, you know, we just recognized all the volunteers in Minnehaha County- And so, you know, we just recognized all the volunteers in Minnehaha County. And here we have an individual volunteering her effort to try to help some friends of hers. So I'm not going to cast any dispersions that way either. So, once again, we can all agree that we're trying to correct this problem.
And once again, I'd like to come to the defense of the Total Vote system. New though it may be, I think it is going to hold some real promise for the future for voters of South Dakota. There are data generators on there, there are instant updates, and there's a host of other advantages to this system that I think are going to be very good for the county and the state as this thing moves along.
Yeah. Commissioner Kelly?
This isn't a very good start for it, but how many ballots, how many absentee ballots went out to the central district?
I don't have that information right at my hand, but on Friday, we had about 500 total throughout the city.
Throughout the city?
Yes, that went back, and I think we had.
But we don't care about throughout the city. We just care, this is the, the central district's the one that's missing.
I think you'd want to make sure that they were all accurate.
Well, I think, Commissioner Kelly, in fairness, we should be concerned about the whole city if that is indeed the way it is.
Well, you haven't had any incidents from the rest of the city?
I've not had any others.
Attorney. Just to Commissioner Kelly's point, I think a large number of people wouldn't know if they got the right, wrong ballot. I mean, it says Huether and Jameson, you know, and after that, who knows? I mean, I think especially for the infirm and the people that are at home, they may not know unless they happen to be the neighbor of a candidate, like in this case. And so, I just don't know how we could even tell.
Any other comments?
Well, I just think if, as long as the county is responsible for the election, I would like to know how many central ballot absentee ballots have gone out, and if they're being double-checked now to make sure. A computer glitch, but, you know, that's really the reason we use computers, because they're more exact. And I still don't understand how this could happen. But could you get us the information on how many, what the total number of absentee ballots to the central district was?
I'd be glad to do that, and I could get you the numbers sent out and the number that are returned back and the number that are still out there.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Here, here's the situation. We're going to the, to the huge voting centers. And every one of those voting centers, you're going to have the correct ballot located there for people to go ahead and have access to them. So the question I have is, when people have an access to find out which ballot you're going to be getting, if that information isn't correct through Total Vote, you could be handed the wrong ballot and not realize it at the voting center that you pick. And I think that's where the devil's in the details. We need to let the Secretary of State know that with Total Vote, I think that we should have a top-to-bottom review of the data that's going in there to make sure it's accurate. You know, the old adage with computers is junk in, junk out. I mean, if I put junk in here, I'm going to get junk out of it. And we want it to be as accurate as we possibly can be. How many times do we go through, even for example, we're coming up to tax hearings, where there's a flaw in the system or something incorrect that's in the database? Junk in, junk out. We got to get it as accurate as possible. So, you know, this is a huge wake-up call to not just our auditor, who, you know, is here before us today, but to the Secretary of State. You know, we have to make sure that it's going to be right.
Commissioner Kelly?
Just wanted a short comment. I do agree with Jeff that I think it was very unfortunate that we tried to make Rebecca the villain in this thing. She's not the villain. I understand you explained to me that she left the office and you told her not to with the ballot. But I think something should have been resolved there, because obviously, if I had a ballot and that was my proof, I would want to make copies before I returned it. And I don't know, it wasn't a filled-out ballot, is that, I think that was noted. So, I just think it's very unfortunate we did that to Rebecca.
Well, and I understand that, Commissioner. Believe me, I was loath to do that, but I was also felt that the actions that took place after the ballot was discovered were mischaracterized also.
Well, you tarnished her name somewhat in the newspaper or whatever. I don't know where the article was, but.
Any other comments? Thank you, Rebecca, for coming forward, and thank you, Bob Litz, for your comments.
Very good, thanks, Commissioner.
This is still the opportunity for public comment. And is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? Yep.
Mr. Pecos, you indicated that you're going to take the next step. Is there something that I should be doing?
You know, what I would do is, obviously, you've let us know. And it's important, I would actually call, I would call over to the city clerk, who I believe is the person handling the election process. Isn't that the city clerk that handles that?
We've been handling the absentee.
Oh, okay.
But it is a city election, so they are responsible for the election.
Well, I would let them know. I would let them know that at least, you know, our auditor.
Actually, I went to the city first.
And they referred you over here.
And they even moved me over to.
Well, I think, I think that, I don't know if the city knows that our auditor indicated that there were some questions related to Total Vote. And I think that the city's probably relying on that same database, Total Vote, to help with their election. So I think you, it's worth a telephone call. But whatever they want to do and take that information for what it's worth, that'd be the city's decision. But that's, that's what I would do. And I would certainly hope that, once again, I hope that somebody calls the Secretary of State and lets him know that, that there's an issue there.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Did you have public comment? Could you just identify yourself and your address, please?
I'm David Knoll. I live in Country Acres out by Wildwater West. And I thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward for you. We're here to protest, my neighbor Ron Becker, Weber, to the issues of a building permit that is 20 by 50 in the front yard of my next-door neighbor. At the 30-foot setback, which is legal according to the county, but 30 feet is not anywhere near close to where the houses are. Now, I have some drawings here, if you want to look at those while we're talking. Thing came from the county, and then I, they got enough for everybody, I think. I drew my house in myself on the side there. In question, thing is circled there, if you'll see that. My property is on the right side of it there. And like, my house is like 72 feet from the frontage line. And they're going to allow him to build that shed 30 feet from the frontage line, which is actually the county law. But I don't think anybody should be able to build that size of building right next door to someone else. And when he has ample backyard to put it in. And he's been an ongoing violation for the 12 years he's lived there. I got some pictures of his property, if you want to look at them. And my house, if you're interested.
Have you spoken with your neighbor?
Pardon?
Have you spoken with your neighbor?
We don't communicate.
And have you spoken with planning?
Yes, I was there yesterday. And I asked him what he saw. He has numerous vehicles around. Most of the time, they're junk or unlicensed or whatever. And he has, currently has an unlicensed Mitsubishi one-ton thing in the front yard. And I asked Mr. Anderson what he was going to do about that, and he said he never seen it. Oh, it's right in the middle of the driveway. You can't miss it now. I have an article here about in February where he made people get rid of their Easter duck and Easter chicken. So I have it in the Argus, if you want to look at it. And if he can see an Easter duck and an Easter chicken, and he can't see a one-and-a-half-ton Mitsubishi, we've got a problem there. I mean, what are we paying these people for with our tax dollars if they're not enforcing the laws? They come out and they only see what they want to see. They don't, and then we approached him with, young man, you, when you come out, you let us know, and we'll show you. He says, I'm not going to tell you when I'm coming. Now, is that the proper statement from a county employee? I don't really think so. This is an ongoing thing for 10 or 12 years. They just ignore it.
Do you have any other comments? Otherwise, I'll give the planning opportunity to. Do you have any questions for Mr. Knoll, Commissioner?
I have a question. You know, it's rare that we have people asking for more regulation. You know, in other words, when we have a setback, it's, you know, that's what the law's been all this time. And so, to, to say that we need to be, you know, furtherers, we don't usually get people asking us to additionally restrict themselves. I mean, for example, if we allow four pets, four dogs, in a place, we don't have people saying, well, they should only have two. If anything, they say, can I have 11? So this is a little bit unusual for us to be asked to increase the restrictions on their neighbor's property.
Well, the neighbor's house is set back the same distance as mine.
Which is legal, right?
Well, that's way past it. What did I tell you was that's on there?
Just looking at the picture for a second there. This, this new garage is going to be this side of that bus, or is it where the bus is?
I don't have it.
This picture up here?
Oh, that one there. Well, it's going to be, that tree you see is on my property. And the property line is just a little bit behind that. He's already built a 58-foot-long thingy attached to his garage that you can see in the far part there, that he slipped in by the closet. If you can build anything along this attached to the garage, it can be 100,000 square feet. Now, I should propose to build another 20 by 50, seven foot from my lot line. If he puts it in the backyard, fine, but nobody should be, and I wasn't even a comp, or had no notification that this was going to happen. And we've got 300 to 500,000-dollar houses in this area, and we don't need any kind of stuff like this in the front yards. I retire to see what your county setback is.
Any other comments from Commissioners or questions? Did the man behind you have a comment? Did you have a comment?
Yes, I, well, maybe it's going to be.
Okay.
I'm Ron Weber, and I'm a neighbor the opposite direction. And I'm concerned about the value of homes in the area when things like this go on. I guess, first of all, I would say the planning and zoning people have handled this very, very poorly. And of course, the concern that I have is the valuation. There's adequate room for this particular storage building in the backyard. He is on a side street, so he could have access, not in the front yard.
Have you talked?
And of course, I was at the planning and zoning office also yesterday, and I asked the people, where will the garage doors be? Which direction would they be? Will there be an approach to this building? Will the person go directly across its front yard to access this building? And they had no answers. How can you issue a building permit without knowing those answers? I think it's very difficult. And I would say it was handled very, very poorly. And I have two other comments, not in regard to this, but I live also in Country Acres, and obviously, we're south of 41st Street, which is the dump road. Have any of you been on the dump road lately? And I have called the dump several times. It appears like it's just scatter every plastic bag imaginable, both directions. And of course, after yesterday's wind, I'd guess they're all in Sioux Falls. And I've called the dump several times about maintenance, and nothing happens. And I was told, well, the homeowners or the property owners don't want us going out into the field picking up the plastic bags and garbage boxes and cardboard boxes and everything else that blows out there. I said, why don't you contact the property owners? I'm sure they would gladly let you go out there and pick up that junk that was yours originally. It's a mess. It's quite a way, quite a way for people to come into Sioux Falls on that road. It's quite a welcome.
Any?
And the last thing that I would mention, and that is, obviously, the county has working relationships with townships. And of course, I think that after a period of time, and I'll use Wayne Township as an example, after the city creeps out into that township, and of course, that township gets smaller and smaller, that maybe the township should dissolve, and the county should take over. In Iowa, there isn't any townships. The county takes over. And I think you would eliminate a level of government. I realize it's a grassroots level of government. But I think if you would take over those partial townships that are left on the fringes of major cities, that things would be a lot smoother. I guess if you have questions, I would try and answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Walker?
I thank you for bringing up the issue about the garbage along that road there. And I think we should maybe look into seeing if we can help with that. As far as doing away with townships, they do sometimes go away. And Wayne Township certainly is under siege. But I would also say that as soon as the township goes away and we take over, that the property tax limitation ceases to exist, and your taxes can be raised by whatever we want.
Well, I understand that. I mean, someone has to pay for the services. I don't think that will ever change.
Any other questions?
And that's facing all of us, regardless of where we live.
Any other questions for Mr. Weber? This is public comment, so we can't actually take any action on anything. We can just listen to what you have to say. I'd like to give planning an opportunity, if they want to say anything at this time. If you guys are done with your comments.
I guess I would just say again, I am here supporting the neighborhood. I am supporting having a clean neighborhood. We don't want to decrease and devalue properties. I think we have enough of those in Minnehaha County and throughout South Dakota.
Mr. Weber, does you?
And I think this is a step toward that devaluation.
Does your development, do they have any rules in their development?
Yes, we do have covenants.
And do, do your covenants have anything to do with setbacks or anything, or positions?
I'm not sure of that.
Or size, or it might be something else to look at, to see what your covenant says?
Yes. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Can you give planning an opportunity to say something?
I'm sorry?
I mean, you're just going to give planning an opportunity to say something?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to print this out. I printed this out. It's from our zoning ordinance. I'll just set it here for you. I have indicated what the front setback is and the side setback for this area. It's 30 feet and seven feet, which the applicant meets. When, when someone comes in for an application for a building permit, I don't have the authority or the ability to say, I'm sorry, but I think that you should put this in your backyard. If it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, I am obligated to issue the building permit. And in this case, the applicant meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. His house is set back further than 30 feet. If you look at the site plan, it looks like it's about 55 feet setback from the property line. So the garage does appear to be, well, it isn't in front of the front of the house, but it does meet the setback. The other thing that I just wanted to mention was, yesterday, after both parties came in, I did a quick look at that subdivision, and, let's see here. There are, as I counted it, at least 12 properties already in that subdivision where the garage is in the front property line. You have, here's an example, let's see here. You have, here's an example, let's see here, right here's an example, here's an example, here's an example, there's more examples in this whole subdivision. I blew this one up. This is up on, this is on Country Acres Drive. Here we have almost, if you look at this property, almost the identical situation where this is the house, and here's the garage in front of the house. So there are many examples in this subdivision where the garage is in front of the house, and I think that the two applicants have portrayed an unflattering picture of what we do in the planning and zoning department. If you recall, just so everyone is understanding, and I can educate the applicants as well, I, with the case of the ducks and the chickens, I never, the planning department never made those people get rid of their ducks and chickens. If you recall, we informed them of the situation, the zoning ordinance. They, as property owners, came in with a petition to amend the zoning ordinances, and that's what these people could do. If they feel that there should be no buildings, no accessory buildings in front of a main building, they could petition the county to amend the zoning ordinance, just like the duck and chicken people did. They paid the application fee, took it through the process, and amended the zoning ordinance. But I think that the, there are many, many examples of where there are people that have accessory structures that are sort of in front of their property. I reviewed the site plan, or my staff did, when they, when the Ericsons came in for their building permit application, it met the zoning ordinance, the setbacks, and we were obligated to issue the permit.
Madam Chair, I do have a serious comment, but first, which came first, the chicken or the duck? But going back to the situation here, they have a building permit. If it's not in violation of their covenants, how would they go about having that building permit taken away? Do they have to go to court?
They would have to file an injunction with the court to somehow show that it was issued in violation of our zoning ordinance, I believe.
Yep, there's always a remedy of court proceedings.
Okay, this commission isn't in a position to take it away, are we? Or are we?
I think it's our ordinances. I don't think we're in a position to remove it, are we?
I would say it would be arguably arbitrary and capricious if you did.
Yeah.
Let's leave it at that.
Do you have another question, Joe?
No, I just would say that it's a tough job sometimes. Thank you, Scott.
Scott, I have another question, unless you had a comment. About all the garbage on the road, isn't there somewhere, I mean, that's littering, and we have garbage haulers that are littering, is there any way we can put some pressure on the city of Sioux Falls, or their garbage haulers that they're littering on county property?
You know, I would have to, I'd have to research that further. I'm sure that there are ordinances out there, probably state laws that indicate that they're, that a sanitary landfill, a regional sanitary landfill, that they have to somehow control debris that is blowing off the site. I think that the sanitary landfill is also sort of in a tough position because they are, they are working with, they're sort of at the mercy of not only garbage haulers, but just regular citizens that are bringing stuff out to the landfill. And the landfill does require that all of the loads of debris, of refuge, has to be tarped. But that's not to say that you're not having plastic bags blowing out of a tarped vehicle because of just the wind, the suction of the wind through tarps. But ultimately, I think it's the landfill's requirement, the sanitary landfill, to police that and to clean that up. And I know that on occasion, they do go out and clean the ditches, and they do attempt to keep that area clean. They know it's a problem.
Any other questions for Scott? I don't think so. Thank you, Scott. Mr. Weber, did you have one more comment?
I just have one comment. His comment, when he had the screen up here, that other lots in the building, in the Country Acres subdivision, have detached garages. That's correct. Most of them do. But most of them are adjacent to the original driveway, and this is not. This driveway apparently will go right across the guy's front yard.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody else here for public comment? Did you have one more comment? Otherwise, we're gonna move on.
I have the newspaper article here pertaining to the duck and the chicken. And his comment was, Mr. Anderson, was the Easter chicken and the Easter duck will have to go. Life is cruel sometimes.
I think we did address that as a county commissioner, and we did change those ordinances when those people came in.
Well, if that's his priorities, how about all this junk at my neighbor's place that they don't do nothing about?
His job is to enforce the laws that are given to him and that are written.
Yeah, well, I know the laws. I got all of them. And pertaining to this little sheet here, if you have it on the bottom there, under zoning, the setbacks, it says, front 50 feet, right there. Well, up on the picture is 30 feet.
I think he showed us the statutes, and I'm not sure what this one pertains to, but he showed us the ones that apply to. Mr. Anderson?
It's an archery roll, like a section line roll or a compound.
Well, regardless, it's wrong. It's a devaluation of my property and every other one in the neighborhood, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anyone else for public comment? I have one more. This is the day of public comment.
Well, I just wanted to, um...
You need your name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sheldon Osborne, 5513 West Falls Street, Sioux Falls. I just wanted to thank Mr. Dunn for pointing out the problem, as the voting that was addressed earlier. And I also wanted to commend the city, I mean, the county commission here for their caution in moving, about the proposal to go to a statewide voter file, which I guess is being done, but also to have super voting districts or whatever was proposed. I happened to be at the meeting here when that was discussed, at least at one time, and I just commend the commission for their caution, because I think the integrity of the voting process is the most important thing, and the central point of the integrity of our system of government, so I thank you for that. And I'm a little disappointed that the auditor would cast dispersions and perhaps use the power of government to discourage people from pointing out problems in the process. I think, I don't think that speaks well for the process that happened the other day. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheldon. We have one more public comment. This is the day. Identify yourself with name and address, please.
I'm Bruce Danielson, 6704 West 9. I'm a chairman of a little group in Sioux Falls called Citizens for Integrity, and we've been trying to highlight some issues that we have, not only, it started out being a problem with issues that we're finding with the way the city of Sioux Falls is running the election. And it's kind of crossed over into now highlighting issues that were, are being brought to our attention because we're being very out there, trying to point out the issues. We don't want to cast a lot of dispersions on Bob Litz. He worked with Rebecca Dunn and I the other day. He really tried, he's really trying to fix the situation. He's, I know the Secretary of State's interested in it, because we have a situation with the voter rolls. We love to vote. Voting is one of those sacred things that we have in this country, and we really want to make sure that when you people run for office, that you have a chance to be on the ballot properly. When you go, and your mother goes, and your father goes, or your kids go to register to vote, or try and vote, you want to make sure that these people can vote. We have a problem coming up with the real ID system and variations of it that are being put into the law, and we're really concerned that all of this is done properly. If we have to go back to the paper records, it would be a shame, but at this point, you know, it may have to be that way so we can go back and actually have something solid, that somebody can't make a computer glitch of some sort. You know, I work with computers. I've worked with computers for over 30 years. I write software. I know how you can accidentally hit a button and change, you know, a million records. And I think I'm kind of an expert in this area, you know? In years past, I have actually wiped out databases and had to go rebuild them entirely. So I know how easy it is to do. And I just want to make sure that the safeguards are there as we computerize our elections more and more, that this can't happen anymore. And I'm willing to work with Mr. Litz, and the county auditor's office, Secretary of State's office, the city attorney's office, city clerk's office. We want to just make sure that whatever we do in this election, spring election that's happening next week, if it does happen at this point, because we have to come up with some decisions, because now we have tainted ballots. And we're looking at what the legal remedies are currently, if the election of next week can actually even happen. So that's what we're deciding, because each one of the ballot issues, four of the seven ballot issues that we have on our ballot next week are wrong. There's issues with each one of them. And now we're getting into constitutional issues. And now we're gonna have some serious trouble. So I just want to let the county commission know that there may be some changes coming up this week as we look for legal remedies. Thank you.
Mr. Danielson, thank you. You missed earlier when we recognize volunteers, and I thank you for your volunteer work that you are out there keeping track of what's going on with, and making sure the integrity of our voting is safe.
Well, thank you.
And it takes volunteers to step up, too.
It's a passion of mine. I've been, this is 48 years now that I've been involved in elections in South Dakota. And I love the process. I grew up all over the United States, and I have lived in 19 different states, and I have been involved in the process from, you know, grade school. And for some reason, I just love the process.
That's what volunteers are for.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Litz has another comment.
Bob Litz from the auditor's office. I'd just like to take a personal note here and then tell you that Mr. Daniels, I view him as a very high-quality individual. He was on our resolution board, he's worked with the elections, and is a matter of integrity. Anything that he can bring down to the auditor's office, we would certainly have a look at, because I know he has a heart of gold. Another thing here that a lot of you don't know is that I've known Becky Dunn since 1984. On her first two Senate campaigns, it was me that walked all over District 15 with her, and we spent a lot of time out there. And it pained me a lot to have to do that. Maybe I did overstep my bounds a little bit, but I also felt that Becky could come to the table a little bit on my behalf as well. So I just wanted you to know, there's a little bit of backdrop, a little bit of history here, and, you know, I just hate getting into these partisan phrases. You know, I was a Democrat for 26 years. I catch heck from the Republicans for switching parties because they don't quite believe me. I catch heck for the Democrats for leaving the party, because they don't quite believe me. You know, I just don't want to get caught up in this partisan wrangling that I sense we probably had a little bit up here today. For that, I apologize to you, and I would also like to publicly apologize to Becky Dunn for any offensive things that I may have said to her or about her.
Thank you, Mr. Litz. Mr. Kelly?
Just one comment. This is hardly a partisan deal. Both candidates for the Central District are registered Democrats, I believe.
That is my point.
Well, it has nothing to do with Republican/ Democrat.
You know, I would like to, I guess, point out that there are some prominent Democrats in the room here today that spoke out.
Are there any other comments? I think we're done with public comment today. We've had about 40 by 50 minutes, and appreciate the people that took time to come and talk to us. I'm glad we have an opportunity where people can actually speak out and see what needs to be said. With that, let's move on.
The next item is regular business. At 9:00 a.m., there was a public hearing to consider six applications for special event on-sale liquor licenses for All Occasions by Hy-Vee, for six wedding receptions on May 3rd, May 10th, May 31st, June 14th, August 2nd, and August 31st to be held at the Crox Gun Club North Country Events Hall. The applications have been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney and Planning Department, and there were no objections to the issuing of the licenses. Mary Ann Lux is here from All Occasions. If anyone has any questions they want to ask.
Good morning, Mary Ann. Are there any questions for Mary Ann concerning the liquor licenses for wedding dances and receptions? Do you have any comments, Mary Ann?
I just wanted to say, I had talked with Cindy about that we are limited to six for the year, so we just did all six at one time, and we actually won't apply for any more this year.
Any more comments?
I have a question, I guess. If, is each Hy-Vee limited to six, or Hy-Vee generally limited to six?
The way I understand it, we're one of the, because we're All Occasions, we have a beverage license, the other stores have a package license, so they really don't, if they can even apply for them.
Kirsten moved his finger.
Kirsten?
I can just comment quick. It's because it's the type of license that the All Occasions part holds, they can have six. The stores are under a totally different operation, so Minnesota Avenue Hy-Vee can't go out and do six, and Louis Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, you know what? And this is a public hearing, so is there anyone that is here to speak in opposition of All Occasions liquor license?
Lot of speakers today.
Is there anyone in favor, other than Mary Ann? I guess we have no public comment on our...
I'm in favor of liquor weddings.
And I did have a motion. Do I have a second to approve? I have a motion and a second to approve the on-sale liquor licenses for All Occasions Hy-Vee, and there's six of them. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I think it's 5 o'clock in Germany.
Thank you.
The next item is, oh, presentation by Elliot Cecil's of Siegel Consulting and Compensation Philosophy and Pay Delivery Systems. Carrie Dever?
Good morning, Mary Ann.
Good morning, Carrie.
Unfortunately, Elliot's plane had some mechanical issues while on the ground, thankfully, but unfortunately, it meant that he is not able to be here today. We have been able to reschedule everything for next Tuesday, so while it delays us with the presentation for a week, it won't delay anything other than that. You'll recall that that presentation was just meant to give you an overview on where we're at with the final report. I can give you a sense of that right now. We're still finalizing the data. They've got a draft ready. We're going through that, making sure that everything is accurate and up to date. The initial data on the compensation side looks like we're doing really well, as far as having pay ranges that are close to where market is. In fact, we're high in some areas. The other thing that we're looking at is the benefits, and we're maybe a little bit low there. So what Elliot will be prepared to talk to about next week is just a brief overview of that, and what that means as far as your market position. The crux to that discussion, as a reminder, is really to be about compensation philosophy. You've had a lot of discussions about things, like we did last time we went through a study. Do you want to lay the market, be at market, lead the market? How do you want to structure your ranges? Do you want an open range? Do you want a step-grade plan? Once you decide that, how do you want to progress people through the ranges? Do you want to have more performance-based factors than you currently have? That is meant to be a discussion to give you the information that you need so that later this year, when you're making decisions for the upcoming year, you have something to inform that process. So just a reminder that that isn't anything other than an information session for you. The final report should be out by the end of the month, and then you can take that data as well to help inform your decisions in the future. Do you have any questions for me today? Then we'll have Elliot back.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, since this is an agenda item, I'd just move to defer to next week.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer. We have whatever's called. The presentation by Elliot's and Siegel's Consulting until next week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is considered a motion to authorize the purchase of two stainless-steel slide salt spreaders in the amount of $25,842 from Custom Truck Equipment from Contract 1FB, IFB 1171, competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, D.J.
Good morning, commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. We have budgeted for this year the purchase of two salt spreaders, and thankfully, the state of South Dakota bid those already and has awarded a contract. We are currently holding two together with chains and two-by-four blocking, and so we would greatly... And so, we would greatly appreciate your approval today to purchase off of the state's contract.
Move approval.
I have a motion.
Checkroom.
I have a motion and a second. This was a budgeted item. Are there any other questions for D.J.? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign electric distribution easement between Minnehaw County and Northern State's Power Company doing business as Excel Energy on county property described as Lot 5, Block 30, Brookings and Edmunds addition to the city of Sioux Falls. Ken McFarland.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Excel Energy is in the process of replacing electric cable and doing some upgrades to its electric facilities that serve this downtown area. As part of that upgrade, they would like to install a switch cabinet that's on county property that's actually located directly across the street from the administration building, across Dakota Avenue to the east, right in front of the, uh, our own energy plant. And that, so they have for this, an easement that they would like us to grant them in order to install that switch cabinet. It's 12 by 12 and you do have a copy of the, the lease, or excuse me, the easement and the plaque showing where that is at. Um, Lloyd has looked at that. He's fully aware of the project and he has voiced no concerns that I'm aware of. And that, and we would ask for your approval on signing this easement agreement to assist Excel in beefing up our power in this downtown area.
Commissioner Barth?
Ken, uh, what's on that spot right now? Is that a tree? Is it dirt? Is it sidewalk?
And that is, it looks like it's on the boulevard side according to the, and so, no, there is nothing there right now that would impede the installation.
And it may help us with less, fewer outages?
It's for, it's for the down, it serves the downtown area of which we're a part of.
Any other questions for Ken? Consider motion?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second to authorize the chairman to sign an electrical distribution easement between Minnehaw County and Northern State's Power, Excel Energy on county property. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Commissioner Barth?
We had a very serious meeting with our, uh, realtors, Bill Hoskins, Ken Robert, and, uh, someone from Plant City Planning, right? Is that, yeah, looking at our, marketing our property up north there. And there are some issues that we need to make sure we have right away for 54th Street North or whatever that street is. And, and also just in which way the drainage is going to go. It looks, and we have to plan it, which, or they, they, we've found ways to keep things moving forward, but it certainly, it's, it's complicated.
Any other questions? Any other liaison problem?
And the main focus of that meeting was to also be descriptive so that we can bring to you the, uh, listing agreement so that the commission could sign it, sign off on it in order to proceed with the project. So, we're comfortable with that process moving forward.
Are we going to be, um, responsible for 54th Street?
Uh, no. Up to a point. Up to a point.
What's that mean?
Well, again, there are some other arrangements that need to be made as far as making those allowance. But if you're asking me, do we have to, do we have to physically pay for 54th Street all up and down there? The answer is no.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Mr. Hoskins, did you have a comment?
Oh, I have, I'm just going to say, uh, what the city's allowing us to do is prepare what's called a minor plat and essentially defer the cost of those plating fees to the purchaser of the 20 acres, so the county is not in that cause. And we're in the process of working with stockwell engineers to get that accomplished. I also, if I have the floor for a moment, I'd like to invite all of you to the annual volunteer banquet for the Sea Land Heritage Museum's next Thursday, April 10th.
That includes food.
Careful, be there.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Chair?
Uh-huh.
I would just say that in looking at that road, one of the interesting aspects is that where it will terminate is right where the new ice facility is, right where the new tennis facility is. And so, while we might need 110 feet of paved road to get to our driveway and the purchasers of the property may need another bit to be built before they can access their property, the preponderance of traffic on this road is going to be going to the ice and the tennis facility, if not the football and basketball, uh, stuff. And, uh, so I think it's not a local road where, you know, it's my cul-de-sac and I only need two inches of asphalt. And there's no way that this county should have to pay for anything more than what we need. Uh, if they need a heavier road for, uh, for that, I think we should, uh, make the, make the city find a way. They're actually already driving across our property there for the hall road on the construction there because they don't want to damage their dainty asphalt down, uh, in the rest of that subdivision.
Any other liaison reports? That will move on to new business. And I do have, um, one new business and that, um, today for lease to the process is going to be that Minnehaw County was granted a three-year accreditation by the South Dakota Social Services for Clinical Management Residential Detox Program. So, may I have our three-year accreditation? And so, I'd like to thank all the people that put in a ton of hard work to get that three-year accreditation back. And Carol Muller is in the audience. And thank you, Carol, very much for your work, but she wasn't the only one that worked on this project to make sure it went forward, so.
And the Armour people, I'm just so happy.
Yeah, we had a long list of people that have helped with that, so thank you very much for your work. Any other new business? Is there any old business? I have a little old business.
I got old business.
Okay.
I think we should welcome our former legal expert.
That was my old business. You beat me to it.
He's been older every day.
I have old business in the back row. We are very happy to see you, Mr. Swanson. Thank you for coming to visit.
Judge, your honor.
Judge, there you go.
The honorable.
Judge, we're very honored to have you here. Is there any other old business?
Move adjournment into executive session for personnel.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn for executive session.